Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, March 26, 2024. The time right now is 7:00 PM. And I'm going to ask that Sheri, please call the wolf.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present establishing a quorum. Folcher, Beaumont, Walker, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. And we'll announce for the record when councilmember Hanford enters the chambers. Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough, will you please lead us in the pledge?
........................................................................
Thank you. Hey, Zach. All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Before we begin, I just am going to take a moment to just acknowledge the wonderful piece of artwork that we have here in chambers. This is a mock-up of a mural that would adorn the inside of our new council chambers when it's finished in about 15 months, give or take. So David Hose, who is the artist, he's done a number of murals here in town, is here in the audience. And so, David, thank you very much for putting this together for us to look at this evening. And thanks for joining us. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That one will be public comments. This is a limited public forum for people to speak to the city council during the city council meeting. Topics are limited to items on tonight's council meeting agenda and to topics specific to city laws, budget, and operations under the council's authority. Comments that are outside this limited scope will not be allowed. Comments that do not follow the council's rules of procedure will not be allowed. First into council rules of procedure, as amended by council action on December 12, 2023, spoken public comment is limited to only in-person comment for all city public meetings, including city council and city boards and commissions. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Spoken comments that are not within the scope or within the time limit of this limited public forum can be sent to the city council in writing. Information on where to send written comments is on tonight's agenda and on the screen. We will now begin public comment. There is nobody who has signed up to speak this evening. Is there anybody that would like to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none. I do see that there are hands up on the participants' list and as stated on the agenda. And as I just stated, we do not take public comments remotely this evening. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that would be the, under announcements and presentations, a branding update with Finance Director Hassert. Good evening.
I'll make it work. That'll hold it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight, I wanted to do a follow-up.
Director Hassert, can I ask you to move the microphone closer? Thank you.
I thought I was pretty loud. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There we go.
I'm here tonight to do a follow-up from February 20th. Our consultant, Jay Ray, was here in front of council and shared with you where we were at with the branding project. Just real quickly, I did want to go, and I know you've heard some of this before, but I think it's worth repeating, especially for our audience. If we could go to the next slide. When we started this process, we started with an outreach to the community through surveys. As you can see here, we went through, we had little postcards that were printed in both English and Spanish that we had taken to a lot of the businesses and community service groups within town, encouraging people to take the survey so we can get a feel for how people felt about Monroe, both currently and what they hoped for in the future. We did receive over 1,000 survey responses back, of which 586 were, did identify as living within Monroe. And within that, besides just the surveys, we also did nine interviews with various businesses around town as well. And we tried to be as diverse as possible with those businesses, both new businesses, businesses that had been established here for quite a bit, quite a long time, Hispanic-owned businesses, some Asian-owned businesses. And we felt like we got a really good representation with those nine interviews. We had also conducted two focus groups, one of which was in Spanish. So again, doing as much outreach as we could. And then compared with the results with what we got back, and again, six other local cities here. In addition to that, we've had several meetings among staff with what we call our brand leadership team, with the senior leadership team. And we've also had two meetings with a group that we call our brand ambassadors. They're people within the community who are, think about them as influencers, in a way. They're either business leaders, or they're social group leaders that were invited to be, to come in and help vet the results that we were getting out of these surveys, out of everything that we're trying to achieve with the branding project. Next slide, please. One of the main guiding stars with all of this was Imagine Monroe. In addition to the surveys, the focus groups, the interviews, the consultant also reviewed all the work that was done when we created Imagine Monroe. We didn't want to reinvent the wheel. And a lot of, there was a lot of good information out of that. And the whole idea is that the branding is the next evolution, and it should support Imagine Monroe. So in every presentation we do about branding, we always come back to what Imagine Monroe says. I know you guys know this very well, so I'm not going to read it to you, but I think one of the most important lines in Imagine Monroe, personally, is the very last one, in that in Monroe, everyone feels at home and everyone feels they belong. That helped then guide what we call the three Ps. Next slide, please. So all the results of that, all the research that was done, both with the branding and with Imagine Monroe, our consultants created the brand foundation, which are these three Ps. What our personality is based on the information that was received. We're friendly, we're supportive, we're within the natural environment, inviting, playful, and vibrant. Our position, where proximity and community converge. And then our promise, our vibrant, meaningful experiences. And the promise is somewhat aspirational as well, just as Imagine Monroe is. So these were the three Ps that came out of all that research. Next slide. For those of you that took the survey, and I know most of you, in fact, I think all of you did, there was a particular question in there that is based on color science, where there were six columns of words, and you were asked to rate them and pick the column that most spoke to you. And out of that, based on the words that were chosen, the color themes started to emerge, where, as you can see on here, based on what was chosen, the three main colors that popped up were green, red, and brown. Now, that doesn't mean that our logo is going to necessarily end up with those three colors, but it is important to keep that in mind. That is the feeling that was coming out of the surveys. And it made some sense, given that there was a lot of discussion about our proximity to nature. You see a lot of greens, browns, especially in the natural environment, some reds. As we get further along and we start working on what's called the brand guidelines, on how to use the brands, there will be opportunity to be able to incorporate these colors, depending on the use of the logo. But I just wanted to remind that this was there, and this was part of the process in how we're getting here today. Next slide, please. So with all of that, with all of the focus groups, with the meetings, with the brand leadership team, the brand ambassadors, this has started to emerge as the favored logo. As you can see, it invokes a bird, it invokes a bird that is soaring, again, the aspirational piece. You can, a lot of people talked about being able to see the M in it. We had a brand ambassadors that talked about being able to see the flags from the Speedway in the negative spaces. There was seeing mountains, they were able to see rivers. There's a lot of different things going on in this particular image. And then the, and then, of course, we've got the font as well. Now, on February 20th, when we were in front of council, next slide, please, we were able to get some feedback from you guys. And a lot of it, we tried to capture here on this particular slide, where the consensus, and we'll talk about consensus here a little bit in a moment, is that there was, there was acceptance of the chosen concept, but there was also a shared desire to see some more colors, which, again, will, you know, I mentioned, will be included in the brand guidelines on how we can do that. There was folks that talked about seeing it in blue, similar to what we have with the wayfinding signs, and then wanted to see what it would look like with some different fonts, both with sans serif as well as serif, whether it's capital, whether we left it as you see there. So with that, you know, I wanted to mention on the next slide here, one of the guiding principles that we used when we were meeting with the brand leadership team, with the brand ambassadors, is we talked about consensus. We have over 20,000 souls here in Monroe, and even among this group, among this leadership team, we have a lot of strong personalities, who have a lot of strong opinions. So it's going to be really, really hard to be able to find something where every single person is going to say, yep, that is it. So the reality is, we want to find something that's going to have a strong consensus. And the way we have defined it is exactly what's on this slide here. If you're less than 80% there, then that would be a no vote for you. But if you're about 80% there, and if everybody is about 80% there, then you have consensus. That's kind of how we worked with it, with the brand ambassadors. That's how we ended up with that logo that was on the prior slide. Next slide, please. So having said that, the consultants went back and they incorporated your requests in to see what it would all look like. And that's what you're seeing here on this slide. So Variations 1A is the first logo, the chosen concept that kind of bubbled up. It's in the greens, it had the ombre, you've got the lowercase on the Monroe, it's sans serif, and then the capital with the Washington. Variation 1B is the exact same thing, but in the blue. That is the blue that is as close as we could find to what is on the wayfinding signs, so that you can see what it looked like. And then, of course, variation 2, again, green and blue, this time, though, all capital on the Monroe. Then you see with variation 3, that's the serifs, that's the similar M to what is on the gateway signs, again, green and blue. And then variation 4 is the same thing with the serif font, of course, all capital. We have started to do some preliminary vetting, and again, keeping the idea of the consensus in mind, that the version that everybody seems to like the most with the last slide, if we may, is variation 1B, which is in the blue color. That ends my presentation tonight, Mr. Mayor, because I didn't want to go into why. And of course, we want to hear from council, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So really appreciate the conversation that we had before, the green versus the blue. And the blue, we thought you were right, it does, at least to us, look better. And would love to have the council's thoughts. Becky, can you go back to the prior slide?
Sheri did.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sheri? Thank you. So looking at councilmembers, Councilmember Beaumont, go ahead.
Thank you so much for that presentation, and really appreciate you taking all of our feedback and going back to the consultants and presenting us with another look. Personally, I really like 1B, and a couple reasons why. I think that the blue, number one, matches our wayfinding signs, which is really important. It also is a clean look. Blue, I think, is just a color that is sort of trustworthy and strong and, you know, represents water. We have our river running through Monroe. But I also really, really like the weight of those letters. So the Monroe, if you notice, in 1B versus 2B, in 2B being the caps, the lowercase letters have more heft, they're darker, they're heavier, they just connote more, I don't know, there's just a good feeling when you look at that. It's just, it's hard to put into words, but I just, I like the mix of the upper and lowercase. I like the white space between the logo and the lowercase Monroe. It just seems like a balanced look to me. I think it's really, really classy. I think just from my marketing background, a sans serif type is always easier to read than a serif type with the wingdings. And I just think it's, it's just, it matches sort of some of the things that we've already put out in the community, and I think people might really, really like it. Lastly, it's got a friendly look and an open and inviting look. So I really like 1B, and thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Folcher, your flag fell, but I saw it was up.
Yeah, I knew you wouldn't. Unfortunately, I do not have the persuasive words that Ms. Beaumont does, but I'm going to not concur with you on this. So I think that you had said the words, we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. And I am with the public six days a week, and these are Monrovians. And again, and again, and again, I have heard, why are we doing this? Because we've got those gorgeous new signs. So that was my contention last time. I do think that the sans serif font looks juvenile, looks immature. It might, maybe that's what makes it inviting. But I think that as much as possible, we need to stick with the amazing signs we just spent how much on a couple of years ago? And the mountain range can be mimicked again, and so I'm digging the little bird thing, whatever you guys are seeing, birds, flags, mountains, whatever, I get it. It will kind of match with the signs that are existing. And they're... I'm trying to remain positive. So I am, I am happy with the blue change. I think that green is very northwest, but blue matches all of our signs. So if you make me make a choice, I'm going to say 4B.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher.
Um, closer. Hello. Yeah, the blue change is awesome. Thanks for listening to our input and doing all of that stuff. It's greatly appreciated, especially when we add extra work to you guys. So I'm coming with a good attitude, it's awesome. I would say I'm 80% on 1B, but my favorite is 4B. And kind of to echo what was said earlier, I have the Monroe wayfinding signs pulled up on my computer here, and it looks very much like that, the lettering, and I think it's just consistent. So I like 4B, but there you go. I don't think I have anything else.
Thank you. Other councilmembers? Let's put it this way, I want to hear from all the councilmembers. So I can, I can, I can go ahead and pick somebody, or somebody can talk. What, so my goal here is that we've got a team that needs to move forward with the next step, which is the architecture. And I want to make certain that we've got something that you are willing to live with for the next decade, because I think we've had our current one for a decade or a decade and a half. And I want this to be something that the, that, you know, the community feels a sense of ownership in. And so to do that, I want to hear from everybody. So Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
We're on it. Well, I like 1B. I prefer the M in 3A and 3B. But I like, and I like the large M, small rest of Monroe. So 1A, 3A, 3B. 1A, the Washington is hard to read.
Do you like the blue, right?
Oh, yeah, it's fine. So 3B would be, would be my choice.
Okay, so Councilmember Scarborough would prefer 3B. Okay.
Want to show it to?
All right. Next, next volunteer, or am I going to volunteer? Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
I really don't care about this type of stuff, you guys know that. But if you're going to pressure me, 3B would probably be my favorite as well. But they are so friggin' close. I mean, they're all cool logos. I mean, really, they all look good. I like 3B the best. It doesn't really matter. Whatever one we pick is going to look good.
All right, thank you. Councilmembers Walker or Hanford?
Oh, stop, gentlemen.
You'll need to press a little harder today.
One day, I'll figure it out. So I am with Councilmember Fisher in that I'm 80% on 1B. But I think that 4B makes more sense because of the signs. I would be 1B if the signs hadn't gone up yet and if we hadn't already done it. Because I, yeah, I really think it's beautiful. All of them, again, yeah, are beautiful. Question for you, Becky, did we ever get an answer on the cost differences with gradients? Like, would we use a gradient in all the newsletters and branding and?
We haven't yet. And I think that, I'll be honest, I would be surprised if we could give you a good cost, because I think a lot of it also depends on, you know, how much of it, you know, how, with the size, you know, whether you're going to have a larger letterhead, smaller, where you're using it. So there'd be other factors involved. I think the costs are going to be very similar regardless of what we do, because they all have a gradient from that aspect, so.
I can clarify, I'm sorry. We, we think, though, that the gradient will be used primarily.
If that, if that, and it sounds like that's where we're headed, yes.
Got it, okay. I'm going to have to go with 4B. I think it's what the people would want, and it makes the most sense. I can just, I can, I can see 1B being out of alignment with a lot of people's ideas in Rome. So yeah, I'm going to have to go final, final vote, 4B.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm with Councilmember Gamble. I'm not, I'm not very, I could go with any of those three that everybody's been talking about. I think the biggest question, I think Councilmember Walker just clarified it, but no matter which one of these we go with, the fonts are readily available for, for doing our own type, letterheads, logos for shirts, all, anything that we want to define ourselves. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, may I? So one of the things that I have heard, and Councilmember Beaumont, I know you're a marketer by date, so you can probably answer this better. It's my understanding that the serif fonts tend to be a little bit harder, especially like if you're putting it on embroidery because of the little wingdings or whatever you call it. So that could create some additional cost. And forgive me for not completely understanding the question a moment ago. So there would be a little bit, so it's a little different than having a static sign with the wayfi, or with the monument signs versus then trying to do hats, shirts, jackets, things like that. But again, I mean, if that is the direction of council, it's up to you to include it in the budget, we can make it happen, so.
So just to clarify, the signs that are, the look that would be more expensive possibly for apparel and things like that is 4B or 1B?
My understanding would be 4B, but I'm not 100% sure of that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good either way. I, I like, I like the signs, and 4B matches the signs, so I'd probably prefer that, but I would, I would be 80% on 2B or 1B or 3B also, so I can be swayed.
Okay, Jason, thank you. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that was, I forgot to put you, like, yeah, I'm 80% on any of them. So, and I would, really, I am. And the thing, I just want us to all realize, like, if we put those four blue logos out here in front of us, and people look, people aren't even going to know the difference. I'm, I'm here to tell you, they're not, having done the marketing thing before as well. So we shouldn't get too hung up, you know, or die on a hill for a font. It's all the same. Yes, exactly. Anyway, and the one clarification was, when you said the general consensus, 1B, where's that consensus coming from? Is it from staff? Is it from the?
No, 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 this, this, you talk about consensus.
Yeah, you said 1B was the winner.
Oh.
Yeah, that was the brand leadership team, so.
How many?
Like I said, it was very, very few vetting. We had to start somewhere to get the conversation started. There was four of us.
Four of us, okay, got it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't care. Okay. You're idiot across, but all right. Yeah, so for me, I like the 1B. It looks really clean to me. At the end of the day, though, it's, it's what council would prefer to do. So if the council would prefer to do the serif, did I say that correctly? Serif, thank you. Then we'll proceed with the serif. So is there any objection, then, to moving forward with 4B? Because what I heard was, I heard three people definitely for, okay, so I heard two people definitely for 4B, one person, yes, 4B, two people, doesn't really matter, 80% on probably all of them, and, but 3B, and then one with 1B. Okay, it's all right. We will move, go ahead.
May I add one thing at the risk of making things worse? One of the comments that did come up with regards to concern about all caps on the Monroe is that in today's society, when you are doing texts, when you're doing emails and things are all caps, that is taken as being yelled at. And I think I personally, as the part of the brand leadership team, that's part of why I was not as comfortable with the all caps. It's not my decision, but we also want to be careful that we don't become a meme. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Great. Any other, any other thoughts on that from council? Go ahead, Councilmember Fisher.
Thanks. No, just to touch on that, then that would be whispering Monroe and yelling Washington.
Yeah.
So to me, it doesn't make any difference. Because Washington's in all caps.
Yeah, I, I agree with what Councilmember Scarborough was just uttering, which is that it's in smaller letters, so it, it feels different when I look at it with the, with the smaller letters underneath.
I'm okay with people yelling Monroe. We're here. Monroe, Monroe.
It's okay, yeah, so.
So that's all you got.
Just want to share everything that was.
No, we're good, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Gamble. All right. So, you know, with that said, it was my intent here to figure out consensus. I feel like I've got consensus. Is any of you then object with moving forward with 4B? All right, we're going to move forward with 4B.
Thank you.
So we'll share that information then with the, with Jay Ray, and I thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda then is the consent agenda, and I turn to the council. Or a vote, or a motion. Councilmember Folcher, go ahead.
I move to approve the consent agenda as provided in the packet.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Councilmember Folcher, a second from Councilmember Hanford. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all in. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Oh, also, please let the record show that Councilmember Hanford entered chambers at, I think it was 7:07 PM. All right. Next item on the agenda is final action, item 7.1, approval of resolution number 2024-007, accepting notice of intent to commence annexation Monroe 30 annexation. It's not annexation, there's twice, all right. It's not my reading, with Planner Bright.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. The last time that we met, we discussed the process of the direct petition method of annexation, specifically in relation to the Monroe 30 annexation, and I just wanted to give a brief outline of that process. So the first step in the process is receiving an annexation petition and then holding an initial meeting, which was our last meeting. Actually, it was not. And then the last meeting was council to direct staff to draft a resolution accepting the notice of intent to commence annexation and authorizing the proponent to circulate the 60% petition for signatures. And so tonight, I'm bringing forward that resolution. Next steps after tonight, if council does adopt the resolution, is the proponent will circulate it, get the 60% signatures, and city council will hold a public hearing with public comment. And then if that is accepted, the petition is moved forward to the Snohomish County Boundary Review Board. And once they approve it, then it goes back to council and can be finalized for adoption. So I just wanted to make it clear where we're at in that phase right now. Since the last time we met, staff has drafted the resolution that's attached to the agenda bill. And staff also met with the proponents on March 12th to discuss areas of concern. And those areas of concern, we previously discussed with the former proponents of the withdrawn North 41 annexation. Just to touch on those, those items are parks, because there is a park identified in our adopted Parks Plan, road network concerns, sanitary sewer constraints, and housing variety. So staff's recommending that these items be addressed through either an annexation agreement, a subarea plan, or another appropriate legal document prior to the upcoming public hearing before council. So there are some potential consequences for the city if we don't move forward with the annexation. I just wanted to discuss some of those, and that is the proponents could develop under the county standards. And for Monroe, that means that housing can, housing could be built at a lower density. The city's public works design standards, like roads, sidewalks, and landscaping, may not be followed. The city's development design standards will not be followed. There'd be a loss in construction and building permit revenue. And we would likely not have the opportunity to procure parks. Also, the city's long-range plan and development assumptions to achieve the housing needs for the future population will be impacted. Next slide, please. Here's the map again of the area. So tonight, staff's requesting the council approve the resolution in 2024-007, accepting, accepting the notice of intent to commence annexation to the city and requiring assumption of indebtedness, authorizing the circulation of the 60% petition, and establishing an effective date, and directing staff to work with the proponents to ensure that park dedication, housing variety, road network and connectivity, and sewer issues are acknowledged and/or addressed in connection with the proposed annexation.
Councilmember, anything?
That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher?
Yeah, housing variety, I think is important up there. Going through all the comp plan stuff and being able to put in duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, obviously not talking about five-story apartment complexes or anything like that. It's one of the things, going through the comp plan when I was on the Planning Commission, was missing some of that with all the neighborhoods that have been built up there and not having more variety in housing. So that's a concern for me, and I'm glad that it's on here. Sidewalks, I also went up there and drove around the property. Kind of just put eyes on it. Sidewalks around that area are needed. And then I just wanted to kind of touch base on Sarah Wiles, I think, her email. Read that. And if there is a way to keep some of those, that tree canopy up there, we've done studies in the past on how important shade is and how much water the trees absorb and runoff and all of those things. So that's something that's important to me to keep in mind as well. But thank you so much for the, the report.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
Perfect. I just want to remind you that the area has been pre-zoned at R7. So that's where it is right now. So I just, I just wanted to remind you of that.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion or?
Yes, so.
Councilmember Fisher?
You stuck me right into that thing, didn't you? All right. Motion one, to approve resolution number 2024-007, accepting the notice of intent to commence annexation to the city pursuant to RCW 35A dot 14 dot 120, requiring assumption of the indebtedness, authorizing circulation of the 60% petition, and establishing an effective date.
Do, do we need to read both then?
Yes. The requested action that's on the agenda bill is slightly different than what's on the screen.
Okay, so I think
I'm sorry.
The request is then to insert the word, oh, wait, is it a different?
No, actually, after motion one, it's "and" and then read the, the rest of it. Oh, sorry, maybe I did that wrong.
That's, that's what I was going to say is, so, so if you just insert the word "and" and then move into, and also move to direct.
And establish an effect date. And move to direct staff to work with the annexation proponents to ensure that park dedication, housing variety, oh, boy. Did you do that on purpose? I gotta find where I was at now. Road network and connectivity and sewer issues are acknowledged and/or addressed in connection with the proposed annexation. I think that went really smooth.
All right, so I have a motion from Councilmember Fisher, a second from Councilmember Beaumont. What it essentially does is takes what was shown on the screen to be consistent with what was written in the agenda, thereby joining what is shown as two separate motions on the requested action on the slide and making it one combined motion. Any discussion on the motion? Or, I'm sorry, Councilmember Fisher, I've been reminded that, that you should speak to the motion if you'd like to speak to the motion. So you made the motion, so would you like to speak to your motion?
Nah, I think I already said what I had to. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 8.1 under New Business. This is the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Updates Draft Guiding Principles with Planning Manager Turtleup.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. This evening before you, I'm just going to start with saying the freight train is coming. We are starting to get the products and pieces for the comprehensive plan. And so the guiding principles is the first piece that the full council will be reviewing. The P3 committee got to see the early versions of chapters 1, 2, and 7, which were the introduction, vision, guiding principles and framework, and chapter 7, which is parks and recreation. So this evening, I just want to give you an overview and let you have your first opportunity to provide comment on the guiding principles. And this is really taking Imagine Monroe and breaking it down to piece, or guiding principles that will be used to establish the goals, policies, and actions in each of the forthcoming elements. That would be the land use, housing, transportation, economic development. Parks, parks is already done. You adopted that in 2022 with the Prose Plan, so not a lot of change there. But the rest of the items, so. Oh, perfect, she's got on the left side. So I'm going to walk you through these, and after I get through this, I do want to go into a little bit of detail about equity because that is a newer topic for the comprehensive plan. I want to give you an overview of all the work the Planning Commission has done and why it's become important besides Imagine Monroe. So the very first guiding principle, and these are in no particular order. Well, I should say, they are, they are now organized more similar to Imagine Monroe. So the first principle is safe and accessible. Monroe is a diverse and welcoming community where everyone feels safe and everyone feels they belong. We aspire for all residents, employers, employees, and visitors to have access to safe, dependable, efficient services, and multimodal transportation options. This includes access to parks, schools, healthcare, police, social services, and fire services. Community services are located in areas that are accessible to everyone in Monroe. The next guiding principle is connected and active. Monroe is a community of interconnected neighborhoods where people of all abilities can access service, parks, and community gathering places through a variety of travel options. Safe and inviting sidewalks and bicycle routes provide access to our locally owned businesses and neighborhood gathering spaces. Monroe is a place where people can take advantage of the outdoor amenities in Monroe without needing a vehicle. Local and community-driven. Monroe is a community of people that supports locally owned businesses, locally made products, arts, and culture. All residents support one another to grow and flourish in Monroe. We actively participate in civic activities, community events, and cultural experiences because it strengthens our relationship with each other and the Monroe community. Affordable and diverse housing. Everyone has a place to call home in Monroe. Monroe residents have a wide range of incomes and diverse housing needs. And even as a person's housing needs may change over time, Monroe always has housing options for people to find housing that meets their needs and lifestyles. Housing in Monroe includes many options, including emergency shelters, temporary dwellings, accessory dwelling units, apartments, townhouses and condominiums, detached housing, houses with yards, and other needs to meet the needs of existing and future residents. I will be coming back to that one. And the last one is equity-centered. Monroe is a community that is a safe place for all, where everyone feels at home and everyone feels they belong. Equity is central in achieving Imagine Monroe as it addresses opportunity, power, influence, and resources to meet the needs of all people. Equity is the principle by which institutions proactively adopt policies and take genuine actions that work to eliminate inequitable adverse impacts and facilitate increased access to resources, opportunities, and representation in planning and decision-making processes to everyone, including historically marginalized and under-rep, underrepresented people and communities. Equity shall be incorporated into all aspects of land use planning and development to ensure everyone has access to services, opportunities, and activities to meet their essential needs, advance their well-being, and contribute towards a high, a high quality of life. So that's, that's where we are. And to tell you how we got there, we drafted, again, Imagine Monroe is the umbrella for the comprehensive plan. And so now we're starting to break it down, and this will establish the goals and policies in each development. The Planning Commission has seen this, P3 has seen this, and then our Community Advisory Committee has also seen that. And that, again, is membership is council, Planning Commission, EDAB, CHSAB, Parks Board, School District, Library, Fire District, and I apologize whoever I'm forgetting. And so that's how we came to you today. But I did want to say, we did receive some comments about the affordable and diverse housing. I tried to work on it. It's a little bit clunky still. So I have, if you're, okay, pass this out. Attempted to fix it. And while I was reading, again, I found a typo. So I'm just going to read it to you and see if this is a little bit better than what is presented in your packets. In Monroe, everyone has a place to call home. Monroe residents have a wide range of incomes and diverse housing needs, and these needs may change over time. Monroe will have housing options for all, including, but not limited to, emergency shelters, temporary dwellings, accessory dwelling units, apartments, townhouses, condos, and detached houses. Monroe's housing options will meet the needs of existing and future residents. So hopefully that's a little bit more succinct than what is in your packet. So I'm going to stop there, and just, I'm looking for some general feedback. Are we capturing Imagine Monroe? Are you okay with the words we're using? Do you feel that this is, we're going in the right direction?
All right. Councilmembers, questions, comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Fisher.
No, it all looks pretty good. I think it's great. You guys have put a ton of work into this whole thing. And connected and active, I have a weird thing with the word take, take advantage of. And it's funny when, it's funny when you read it in the packet and then when somebody reads it out loud, because I didn't catch it in the packet at all. And then when you read it out loud, I was like, take advantage. Or a place where people can enjoy the outdoor amenities in Monroe without needing a vehicle. That's just one of my things. And then a couple of the places, it says, and we'll move on to the diverse housing. I think there was one before that, too, where it says, everyone, or every, every housing, let me see if I can find it here again real quick, housing that meets their needs and lifestyle. Shoot, I can't find it. Options for all, and then it includes everything. So for me, options for all is just the end. Options for all, and then he, maybe be able to take out the emergency shelters, temporary dwellings, accessory dwellings, apartments, townhouses, condominiums, dollhouses, treehouses, detached houses. We just start getting into this whole naming thing. So for me, it's just the everything works out. Perfect. That's all I have.
But we can keep doghouses, too.
Doghouses, yeah.
Okay, so, so just looking at the council, any objection to adjusting the word with take advantage? Okay. Any concern about removing everything after the word "all"? Okay. And what was the other one that you mentioned?
I think that, that was it.
I thought you had a third one.
Yeah, instead of all, I think sometimes it says everything.
The connected and active, the very end was without needing a vehicle. You said you had a comment, a concern about that.
Just take, the take word, and take.
Okay.
Enjoy or utilize or.
Use, use?
Use, enjoy.
Okay.
Kind of like enjoy.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at use or enjoy. I'm, I'm not looking at it in the total context, but we'll, we'll play with those two. Okay, sounds good. Councilmember Beaumont, go ahead.
There's also an extra in Monroe in that sentence. So Monroe is a place where people can enjoy outdoor amenities without needing a vehicle.
In Monroe?
We need three Monroes in that sentence, just so. We can't get enough. In caps. Yes, in caps, with serif!
As long as it's not green.
All right. Anything else, Councilmember?
No, thank you.
Okay. I see one of you playing with the, no, you sure? You pushed the button there first. Okay. Any other comments on what Kate's got over? He hasn't turned it off. It keeps.
I tried, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's either Kyle's orange hat or it's his red microphone. It's, it's fine. Now Tammy's repeating after Kate, so hey, you know. All right, go ahead, Councilmember Fulcher.
I did have a comment, but Kyle fixed it. So I just want to say, of course I had something to say, but it's all taken care of now.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, yes, my concern was already addressed. It's interesting that it was in there because we talked about that at the Community Advisory Committee, about the take advantage thing. So I'm not sure how it still
Yeah.
found its way in there, but, because that was brought up at that meeting, too, so. its way in there, but, because that was brought up at that meeting too, so. There's one other thing I was gonna say, and I was thinking, because I know you've done a lot of work on this, so.
We're getting there.
So we'll add a thank you? Okay.
Appreciate that. Okay, and then before we get to the action, if you can go to the second or third slide, I just really want to give you a brief overview of all the work that the Planning Commission did last year and the beginning of this year. Part of the action request this evening is that you accept their definition of equity, and the reason that I'm bringing this to your attention is changes with the Growth Management Act, there's a focus on racial equity when we get into the housing element, I've given you a lot of citations in the Agenda Bill, but really trying to show you equal is not equitable. And so trying to explain that, and this afternoon, I was really thinking about how do I explain this for Monroe? So the bottom pictures, what I'm trying to get at with equity is, we don't all start at the same place, and so when you're in planning, some of our older neighborhoods don't have sidewalks, they don't have street trees, and so trying to get that into how you think about land use. And that tied into, the Planning Commission spent four meetings last year, and then they did their final modification to the definition earlier this year, which is on page 219 of your packets. And the definition is very straightforward. Equity is a fair distribution of opportunities, power, influence, and resources to meet the needs of all people. And then below that is the equity statement, and I just want to recognize that this was the basis for the guiding principle. So there's a lot of background information in your packets. I also wanted to give back to councilmembers Hanford and Beaumont. The historically marginalized is not out of Growth Management Act, it is out of the Putusam Regional Council definition, so I did want to clarify that, that came up at our last CAC meeting, so that's for clarification. And then the other terms that are out of the Growth Management Act, I did define for you in the Agenda Bill. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and then again, this evening we're asking for acceptance of the Planning Commission's definition for equity and for the guiding principles. If you are still wanting to modify them, you're gonna see them again, but I'll continue working on the information you gave me this evening.
Any other questions from the council? And again, just looking so that they can move forward with the next group, looking for a motion, and there's a sample motion, go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
I move to accept the Planning Commission's recommended equity definition and the draft guiding principles.
I have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Fisher. Councilmember Beaumont, did you want to speak to your motion?
I just appreciate all the hard work. I know, being on the CAC, there's a lot that goes into this, and you've been very patient in taking edits from all of us, and this is a lot, so thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
I was gonna say the same thing. Kate and Lance, you guys went through some, some very difficult meetings in Planning Commission, as we were kind of juggling this 2024 concept, and I just, I know you guys had to go back and forth to the drawing board so many times, and I appreciate you and the work that you've put into this, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, so we'll go ahead and call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes at zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is council report. So I will start off on my left here with Councilmember Campbell. Shall we do a drum roll? Or Jeopardy, your choice?
There it is. For those that participated in the annual Monroe Public School Foundation, they raised over $55,000, I want to say, on their online auction, so fantastic, their major revenue goes right back into kids in the Monroe Schools, School Districts of the Sky Valley, so that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Councilmember Scarborough.
Not much to report, look forward to the Easter egg hunt this weekend. Other than that, nothing fast.
Thank you. Councilmember Fulcher.
I like his report, I'll go with that, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont.
I also am looking forward to the Easter egg hunt, and if you are free later that day, come on down to the library at 3 o'clock for our Historic Inns and Lakeside Resorts presentation from the Historical Society. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker. Come back to me? Yes, Councilmember Fisher, I was gonna call you Councilmember Kyle. You have one.
It doesn't matter to me. Not a whole lot, I went to the Monroe School District strategic plan as a parent, and not at a council. So, and it was great, so to go over the strategic plan, it was good to sit in there and see all the work that they have put into that, and we are, I feel definitely heading in the right direction with the school district also, so that was, that was nice. And then I see that Brandy Blair's here, so I want to thank her for all of her work that she does in the Planning Commission also, and with definitions and stuff that we have here too, because I know that she's put a ton of work into that as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mary, yes. I had a great, it's like I knew or something here. We had a great time with Councilmember Beaumont and Walker, and some of the staff, Deborah Knight, and Jacob Roberts, and our city administrator. My, my mind is blank, Zach Humphries, sorry Zach. We had an amazing time together at the National League of Cities Conference in DC a couple weeks ago now, and it was great to meet and lobby on behalf of the city, meet with Representative Del Benet, and then staff of Cantwell and Murray. It was my first time of going to the National League of Cities, and so that was interesting. Councilmember Walker and I are, I'm not sure that we're officially on, but we are trying to be on the group that's representing the state of Washington for the, I think it's Community Leaders of America. Washington was the only state not represented, 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 and so we expressed our interest in that. So we'll see what happens afterwards, I hope, but, yeah, it was a great, great time, and that's it.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember Hanford. Councilmember Walker.
I, I also had an amazing time on the trip to DC with all the names that Councilmember Hanford listed out. Thank you to Deborah and Zach for keeping us all in line and in a row, and thank you to Senators Murray and Cantwell and Representative Del Benet's office for being accommodating and listening to us talk their ears off about the police facility and the therapeutic court and the railroad crossing concerns or presentations that we gave. With the recent legislative session also ending, I just wanted to say, thank you and congratulations to Representatives Gaynor and Steele and Senator Hawkins, I think they all passed some great bills, so kudos to them, and we're lucky to have them. And then lastly, or second to lastly, Councilmember Lowe also had four awesome bills get signed by the governor as well. So great work to him, not our rep, but still, I know a lot of those laws are gonna help us in Monroe. Lastly, this Saturday, I went to the Ahmadiya Muslim Community Annual IFdar Dinner, and I had the pleasure of filling in for Mayor Thomas and speaking. The theme of the event was building peace together, and it was a pretty, pretty cool, inspirational event. I know Pastor Jeremiah Campbell was there and spoke. There are a few other offices that were there whose names I cannot recall, but FIRE was represented, the local Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints was represented and spoke, they both spoke. But just, just powerful, we were treated to an amazing dinner. I totally recommend that the rest of the council consider attending next year, just because I think it's, it's a very special opportunity to break bread with neighbors and talk about concerns that we all have about the well-being for our community and the world, and anyways, yeah, it would just, it was a pleasure, and thank you to them for hosting that event, so. That's all I got.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Walker. We're gonna go ahead and go on to Staff and Department reports, Finance Department report with Director Hasser.
Just to keep you guys from getting sick of me, the report is in your packet, and I'm available for questions.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? You did a great job of presenting and answering those questions. Thank you.
Stock tips.
Community Development Report with Director Bailey.
Just getting, getting used to the podium, just kidding.
We can bring it over for you.
No, I am totally kidding. A monthly report for community development, I'd just like to highlight a few things. The project highlight this month is the project that's going on next to IHOP, it's, you've probably seen the building going up, it's a Starbucks, and I think there was a question that came up at one of the council meetings about whether it was a drive-through only, and it is. It seems like a bigger building than just a drive-through, but that is the intent. I do like to highlight new businesses come to town, and we did have a pre-application meeting for a sushi restaurant, The Sushi Spot, and since they, since they've done the pre-app, they have, as I understand, leased the spot at the corner of Lewis and Main, and have a business license, so it looks like they're gonna move forward on that, so it'll be another diverse food, food option for Monroe. One other mention, we had talked a lot about the building code, the new building code was adopted and went into effect on March 15th, and we received, I don't know the exact number, but over 100 permits prior to March 15th. So the numbers that you see year to date for 2024 for issued building permits is gonna go up dramatically here soon, and having said that, we're in the process of hiring a new building, or a building inspector, and are doing interviews tomorrow, so we'll cross our fingers, and we'll, we have a new permit tech starting on April 1st, and if we get a building inspector, we'll be fully staffed. So with that, I will complete the report, let's see who has any questions.
All right, thank you very much, any questions for Lance? Go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you. Quick question, I noticed the civil design review for Ann Street, those are the Buck House parcels, is that anything moving forward, or is that just business as usual?
It's, it's moving forward on the site plan that they had submitted, and there's a number of associated permits, because they do have to do some, they'll be putting in infrastructure and sidewalks and other things, that's a part of that project, so that's a part of the engineering review.
So, maybe you can't answer this question, but I'm gonna ask anyway, so does that mean like in the next three months, there might be something really significant going on there, just in terms of moving those homes if needed?
I, I don't know what the timeframe, once, once the review is done, when the applicant may move forward or not.
Okay, thank you. And then, second question, The Sushi Spot, is that in the Fiddler's Bluff old building? So when you say Lewis and Main, are you talking about?
It is.
That building that's...
It is the southeast corner, so it's, it's directly adjacent to, or next to where the Burnt Barrel is currently located.
Wow, so it's a Dolof Key Building?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great, that's exciting, and do they have any idea when they might be opening?
No idea.
Okay, well, that's wonderful to get some new businesses downtown and in a very public location where they're easy to walk to and all of that, so that's good news, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Did you have a question?
Oh, did you put your hand, I didn't see your...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, mic was on the whole time.
Is this about the bacon short platted?
Close.
It's not, it's not a breakfast restaurant.
It's close. When am I gonna be able to buy a Frosty? Do you have any idea, or when's, when's ground gonna get broken?
I have, I have no idea on the timeframe, but, but the Wendy's, Wendy's project is moving forward, but I don't know a timeframe for it.
No problem.
But I will let you know.
Junior bacon cheeseburger. In the meantime, if you'd like a square hamburger, I'd be happy to fix you one. Might even make it a Rombus, we could have fun with it. All right, next report we have is Public Works Department with Director...
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, for that kind introduction, but I'm filling in for Director Roberts while he's out for a few days, Scott Peterson, City Engineer. I'm here to present the Public Works monthly report, as kind of taking a little bit of lead from Rebecca, Becky, it's in your packet, I just wanted to highlight a couple things. First is that Washdaw is working on a Highway 2 corridor safety improvement program, they're in design phase right now, probably 2025 is when we'll see some activity. But for Monroe, it's a lot of minor changes, striping and maybe some crosswalks where the main signal intersections are. The biggest thing that we probably will see is they're relocating the bus stop in front of, I call it the Red Barn, but Fusion Diner, they're moving it a little further east towards Taco Time, just to, to provide more sidewalk capabilities in front of the Red Barn, so that's probably the biggest thing we'll see. It is a corridor-wide project, it reaches all the way up into Gold Bar, and they're bidding it out as one giant package, so. And then, of course, one of my favorites is watching the day-to-day transformation of City Hall, it's fun to watch. Most of the building demolition, it looks like it's complete, I know they're starting to do underground work as well as doing the underground utilities and footings for the future structure, so things are moving right along, we're excited. Any other questions you may have for us, and I'd be welcome to answer them, or try to.
All right, any other questions for our City Engineer Peterson? All right, thank you very much. All right. Now we have City Engineer Jolly, I'm sorry, Chief Jolly.
Well, it's back to school for me. I will attempt to mirror the wise counsel in words of the Fine Director of Finance, Rebecca Hasser, and the report is contained within your packet, if you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Scarborough.
Not really a question, it appears, it's a comment, it looks to me like on, on this page of burglaries, vehicle recoveries, et cetera, et cetera, it appears that crime in Monroe is up to me, because we're only in the first three months, and a lot of it is half of what we had in the total of 2022, I don't know about 23 and 4, even 24. Is there, am I wrong? I mean, it's not your fault, I'm saying it's, you know, with more people...
I'm gonna check your performance evaluation later.
More people, more crime, more homeless to me is more crime. Is there any thought process on your part on that comment? Yes, no, maybe so?
Councilmember Scarborough, you would not be incorrect in that there is an upward trend in the first quarter of 2024, and we are seeing more activity. We have been isolated from the general surge that we've seen in the three county area in regard to various things that have happened, in such as police reform, legislation, COVID... in regard to various things that have happened, in such as police reform, legislation, COVID and such. We've been fortunate in that we're geographically isolated from the I-5 corridor. However, that has worn somewhat thin, as agencies along that corridor have stepped up their enforcement in their response to upswings in crime. That naturally allows people or forces people to look for other new areas. So yes, it is something that is concerning. We're aware of seeking solutions to.
I know, I know you guys are doing a great job. Nothing on your, what you're doing, it just, it's a comment based on what's happening in society today. It's disturbing to me. It's disturbing to a lot of people, myself also included.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is the mayor administrative reports, and I turn Administrator Knight for the extended agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, we're going to start off with the Tuesday, April 2nd, which was originally planned to be a Public Safety Committee meeting, but there aren't any items of significance on the agenda for that night. And so our finance director, Mickey Hasser, was wanting to pull the finance and HR committee members to see if there would be a willingness to have a meeting that night, starting at 5:30, to review the revenue options. The last finance and HR committee meeting was canceled, and so this would take that as a replacement.
Councilmember Scarborough, are you pushing your button to speak? Okay, go for it.
I'm okay with it. My availability, I know, is simpler than some others, so for me, I'm okay.
How about other committee members? Okay. He's chair. Councilmember Foulter.
I am available. I'm assuming it would start at 5:30, like the?
Correct, 5:30. All right. Excellent. Thank you for your willingness to make that change in order for us to?
Okay. Do you have any concerns if you're not there? Okay. Perfect. Okay. Sounds good. We'll go ahead and make that change.
Okay. Great. Excellent. Thank you, council. And then, we do have a regular study session planned for that night, and the focus will be an overview of the Human Services Division and the work that they're doing and the partners that we have. So we're preparing to bring in a number of different speakers in order to provide kind of a complete picture of what's going on with Human Services. Moving forward then to the regular business meeting on April 9th, we have a Legislative Affairs Committee meeting planned for that night. We'll do an overview and a legislative recap, and then we also will talk with council about the resolution extending the Community Human Services Advisory Board. For the regular business meeting, we have many of the standard items, so we have accounts payable, meeting minutes, payroll, and then authorization to purchase the 179th Avenue Pump Station Generator, award bid, authorizing to sign a contract with, oh, Col, oh, you're going to get me. The, the Brothers for the 179th Avenue Sidewalk, I'm going to try and attempt that Italian name. Colarucio?
Colacrucio.
There you go.
I like the way you said it.
All right. We'll move on. Authorizing the mayor to sign the local agency consultant agreement with Excel Tech Consulting for 179th sidewalk construction. Good news there. And then board and commission work plans. I'll be bringing those forward to the council. New business, we have an ordinance for downtown property funding. That'll be first reading, and then department reports, and of course, the extended agenda. So those are the items that are planned for this meeting on the 9th.
Okay. Any questions about the extended agenda? All right.
I keep trying to pronounce that Italian last name.
We'll, we'll work on it later.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. We'll start off with a round of applause. Okay. City Administrator report?
Thank you. Round of applause. So I have a couple of kudos to give out for, that I wanted to share tonight. First of all, I just wanted to thank Becky Hasser for the work that she's been doing with J-Ray and the work with David Hose on the, on the mural design. I really just appreciate the effort that she's put into it. Those are not easy projects, and I just want to thank her for the effort. Also want to recognize Ben Worthen this evening. The council did adopt, under the consent agenda, the Sergeant's Contract. Again, those are things that happen on a consent agenda that take hours of staff time to complete. He did an excellent job. I know he came to council several times to discuss and got some direction, but he's always such a master at being able to come and negotiate a contract that all sides feel like they came out ahead. So it's a gift that he has, and I really appreciate it. And then finally, Councilmember Hanford mentioned Zach Humphries. Zach just did Bowman, Yeoman's work, not Bowman's work, Yeoman's work, in, in really herding cats during the National League of Cities. And those are not easy things.
I thought you said you kept them in a line. I was thinking ducks.
Again, that's not something easy, that the schedule changed all the time, and Zach really was able to keep on top of it and get us where we needed to be when we needed to be there. So I just wanted to recognize that work. A lot of work goes on behind the scenes to make those conferences come off and, and look seamless from the outside in. So big kudos there. Then just a couple of save-the-date items. Trail's Master Plan on April 4th, that'll be at Park Place Middle School from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. On Tuesday, April 9th, the mayor will be giving the State of the City address at 11:30, and that'll be at the Chamber of Commerce meeting. If anybody is interested in attending that, you can contact me and we'll get you registered for that. So I see. Thank you, Councilmember Walker. Fisher, thank you. Foulter, okay. If anybody else decides later on, just again, get ahold of me. You'll be there? Okay, excellent. And then, just a reminder too, to make sure that you have it on your calendars, April 30th, we're going to be doing the city council, the strategic plan and the budget. So that'll be 5:30 p.m. here, and we will obviously provide dinner for council members for that meeting. But that'll be an opportunity to finally take a look at updates to the strategic plan, and then also just talking again about your budget priorities going into our budget process. So already starting that work, but it's exciting always to see where we've been, what we've accomplished, and then look forward to putting the list together for the things that we want to do in the coming years. That's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions on the city administrators' report? All right. Mayor's report, so I'm going to start off with, I've been sick the last several days, and so I've got this wonderful raising, radio voice, yeah. I, excuse me. So with that, with that said, with that said, I do appreciate that Councilmember Walker went and spoke in my place on Saturday, so I, that is something that was really valuable for me to know that you were willing to go, you had already signed up, and that you were there to speak, and I, I really appreciate that. You did that at the last minute. As I understand it, you may have had some thoughts ahead of time, but spoke from the heart, and that's how I usually do things, is just speak from the heart, and I'm sure that everything that you said was something that was really well-himming for the community or community there, so thank you for doing that. Yep. And then, just some, just running through some of the meetings from last week, I guess starting off with this week and working slightly backwards. Yesterday, I met with the retailers that are interested, some people that are interested in setting up cannabis store here in Monroe. They've been here a couple of times before the council, and I went ahead and met with them. I think if I heard them correctly, they have the two licenses that have been allocated to the city of Monroe. So we just talked through what the regulations are. They shared with me much of what they've shared with you here in council, just why they're interested in, in coming here, and just things along those lines. So just sharing with folks that I, I met with them. I also met earlier today with some people from the Islamic Center of Monroe. There's going to be this new Islamic Center of Monroe here in city limits, so the people that came to visit with me just before this meeting are people who have moved here to the city of Monroe. A number of the people that were in the room sounded like they had, were in the woodlands, so that area that was recently annexed are also in Main View, so they're people that have moved into a lot of the newer housing stock on the north side of Highway 2. They expressed a lot of interest in getting involved, involved in the community, everything from being part of like tree planting to, you know, parks projects, to doing things to help people in need. So just gave them some information about who to contact with Human Services, to get in contact with different organizations in town, but also within our Parks Department, Public Works Department, so that if they want to do tree planting projects and things like that, that they have contacts there. I also met with Judge Ness on Friday, kind of regret that I did that right now, because I was probably sick when I was in that room. But with that said, had a really good conversation around Human Services and also around the therapeutic court. And then, I guess the last thing that I have on my list is just thank you to David Hose for the beautiful mural that is here this evening. And I, I really love the way that that looks, and just turning to council, this is something that would adorn the inside of council chambers, and I didn't know if council members wanted to share any thoughts. Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
I thought it was gorgeous, like took my breath away, and as Mrs. Rebecca Hasser, Becky Hasser, was saying, you could stare at it for about 20 minutes, I'm sure longer, and keep finding things that you love. So amazing that you have a gift where you can see that in your head and then put it on a, on a canvas. I'm very excited to see it in the future City Hall, and thanks for, for being willing to, to do it.
Thank you. Other thoughts from council members? Go ahead, Councilmember Fisher.
Yeah. Just echo your words. Looks great. Great job. Thank you for putting all this time into it. Yeah, it's, it's, it's really neat thing. It's going to be quite amazing when it's six by 18 feet long. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Foulter?
Not being an artist, I'm still stunned that a hand can create something that looks like our home. And it's, it's all the things that make Monroe, Monroe, and you did a very good job, David. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
Might as well jump in here, since everybody else is talking. So David, I've loved your murals for years, and always back in the Hitching Post days, you used to love to go in and have breakfast and look at your beautiful artwork, but this is really extraordinary. My favorite part of it is the Imagine with the eagle that's sitting right on top of that mountain range. You know, when you look at our vision statement in our Imagine Monroe, it just really embodies a lot of the words in that document, or that, you know, our guiding principles are right there. And you just did a really, really wonderful job. I love the idea. Director Hasser was saying that each, each letter is supposed to be sort of a window looking into our community, and I love that idea set outside in our beauty. So, great job. I really, really like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor. I have not had a chance to look up close at it. I'm dying to get over there and look at it, but it, it looks amazing from here, and, and your work has always been so awesome around town, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough?
I look forward to seeing it on the large scale on a big wall. I think it would be quite, it will do much more for it than just that size mural. Once it's on the big wall, it would be even more stunning. Thank you.
Councilmember Gimble?
Yeah, I, the piece that I lo, loved was what Councilmember Beaumont was talking about, that, that sounds like Becky brought up, but, you know, our location and just the setting and the backdrop of Monroe is just so beautiful. I think it's captured great, and then to have all the, you know, what goes on in the city to be in the, in the, in the letters, and then Monroe, it just really, you know, the symbolism there, it's really, it's really cool. So I liked it a lot.
Thank you.
For me, I'm still missing the deer, you know, but with the hunter, but that's just because I'm biased that way, but I love the fish, I love the eagle. It looks absolutely gorgeous. Fantastic job.
Thank you. So I also, did everybody get a chance to speak? I think everybody spoke. Okay, excellent. So David, again, I, I really love what I'm looking at here, to a couple of points of a couple of council members. You know, I, I wish that I had the, the gift of being able to take the thoughts and images in my mind and, and put them in a place like that where people could see it. And that's a, that's just a wonderful talent that you have. Through a variety of different auctions here in town, I have, I think, three of your pieces in our house right now, and it's, your, your work is just phenomenal, and it's, it's one of, one of the things that I love about this, is that it's going to be a piece that will be in council chambers for quite a long time, and the fact that we're doing it, you're doing this on panels so that it can be moved, so that we can do maintenance on the wall and things like that, and then put back up, I'm really excited about that. It'll be something that generations into the future will be able to appreciate, and I thank you so much for that. I also thank Becky for the work that she's been doing with this. I started off working with David a lot on this in the beginning, and then ended up starting a new job and everything, and so Becky's been doing a lot of work to, to help move this along. The whole, like, concept of the windows and everything, I think that was something that, that Becky had talked to me about also, and those sorts of thoughts have, I think, influenced what it is that we're looking at here. So Becky, thank you very much for doing that and, and helping us along with this. Thank you, David. So I'm not hearing any objection to moving forward with this. David, you have the council's direction in, in mind, for what it's worth, that go forth? Yep. I do have a couple of minor comments I'll just go ahead and share with Becky, so that she can go over them with you, but they're, they're minor, very minor, so, yeah. Thank you very much. Okay. I don't, does anybody have any questions for me? That was a lot, especially with my voice being the way that it is tonight. All right. We do have a need for an executive session. This is potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110, subsection 1, subsection little "I" for an initial?
Five minutes.
Five minutes. So what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and say that we're moving into an execu, an executive session for an initial five minutes, beginning at 8:26 p.m., with the potential for action to follow. So we are now in executive. We're back in session. The time right now is, is 8:36, and it's now 8:36. And with that said, we have no further action this evening unless there's objection, we will be adjourned. There being no objection, we are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody.